Council, regular meeting Tuesday, April 6, 2021. We'll have the invocation by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby, who we're glad to have back.
Thank you.
And the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Thomas Harvick. Please stand.
One other change.
Let us all pray. Holy Father, we're so thankful for this day. We thank you, Lord, for your greatness, and we thank you for your grace. We thank you, Father God, for the things that you've already done and those things that you shall do. We thank you for those who are here. We pray for them. We pray for their family members. We pray for this city. We pray for the city government. We pray, Lord God, that you continue to bless the land, and, Lord, keep us safe and keep us secure. Lord, we thank you for all those who serve. We ask you, Lord God, to give us a servant heart to do the things that are pleasing in your sight. Thank you, oh Lord, for everything that you've done. It's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present.
Prove minutes.
First time in a year.
Uh, I'd like to make, yeah, no, I said, I'd like to make a motion. We amend the title to approve minutes of the April 6, 2021, uh, minutes of the March 16, 2021, regular council meeting. Second, did that make sense?
No.
That's what's written.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Here's one more. Uh, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the minutes of the March 16, 2021, regular council meeting and dispense with the reading. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, delete items 12, 13, and 14.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any discussion from the council?
Why are we deleting things?
Which one?
Uh, specifically 12.
Uh, 12, well, it's, I, I, you know, we haven't had a lot of information on it. Nothing's been sent, sent down really from the administration or anywhere else. We've, uh, something we talked about two years ago, and all of a sudden it shows up on the agenda. I mean, I'm not for spending $30 million right now. There's a lot of other things. I mean, do we know who's going to run it? Do we know if we're going to contract it out? There's a, there's a lot of issues.
So do we want to delete these from the agenda or?
You just delete it from the agenda.
Argue them.
And I would ask that, you know, we, we sit down over the next week or two, then we talk about it and go through this whole contract, you know? Give us a chance to ask questions and.
So you wouldn't be for introducing it and having discussion and continuing?
Uh, no.
Well, I just, uh, again, I, I would, uh, I would be more, um, it makes more sense to me to put the items up for the council, argue them out, vote them up or down, and, uh, and, and otherwise establish, you know, what of, what problems there are with it as opposed to just, um, not dealing with them at all, uh, but I, uh, that, I would do, and it's, it, it appears to me to be almost the same thing. I would argue that, I, I think, I guess the end result would be the same, uh, theoretically. And I, uh, really am saying that as a kind of exploring your thinking about just, um, ignoring the things as opposed to taking them up and, and discussing them and treating them as a piece of business. So I, I, I would be more for, for talking about them and talking in public and making sure everybody hears what we're thinking and then, and I, and I would especially like to hear anyone who has anything to say about them, you know, uh, criticisms or otherwise. When we take these from the agenda, then that will deny, I guess, I guess that just takes it, means no one can talk about it at all?
We can talk about it, but again, I, we, we should have already been talking about it in the last two or three weeks. That's what we should have been doing, in my opinion. Like I said, this was something we, we talked about two years ago, you know? There was a study done about membership, if you remember that, and there wasn't even enough membership to, to build one, I guess, you know, uh, to sustain it. There's things in here, if you look in the contract back in the back, there's things that we still need another five or six million dollars for, for furnitures, fixtures, you know, think, if you read the contract, it's, I mean, it's highlighted in there. It's just, there's too much, in my opinion.
Mr. President, I would like to call to order, we have a motion and a second, and so we need to vote on that because we're, we're, we're debating those three items.
Actually, the, so we have a motion and a second, now it's discussion?
No, it's time to vote because he made the motion, I second, so it's time for us to vote on it. If it's on the item, we can discuss it at that time. If it's not on the item, we can't discuss it.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Williams has declined to, uh, remove his motion, so I think Mr. Hall and the, uh, Mr. Darby's request to call for a question and vote on it is appropriate.
That is, yeah.
And that's wish of the council.
So, could I ask one point of order?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, uh, to change the agenda, does that require 100% of the vote?
No, majority.
The what?
A majority vote.
To add an item would require 100% of the majority.
Add an item?
I mean, it would require the unanimous, to add an item, but to delete does not.
Thank you.
All right, there's no further cur, questions or discussion? Counsel, please cast your vote.
So the vote is to delete 12, 13, and 14?
Mm-hmm.
A vote yes would be to delete it, a vote against would be to keep it on there.
Okay.
All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Hold on just a second, you are a little faster than I am. I had a motion by Mr. Larkin, second by Mr. Harvey. Okay. Motion carries. Counsel, under, uh, counsel, under bids, there were no bids for this item, uh, so I've been informed that the purchasing department will rebid this, so there's no action needed for the council at this time.
Ceremonial?
Oh, ceremonial matters, I'm sorry, I skipped that one. Presentation by the Shreveport Bojor Sports Commission.
President, council, mayor, um, just wanted to, one thing that we really wanted to do, especially over this last year when we really, we always rely on our, uh, police and our fire, and of course, you know, over the last year, the fire more so for the COVID planning, et cetera. But, uh, I really wanted to recognize, because a lot of times the frontline, uh, partners don't get, you know, a lot of the recognition that they receive, and so we had an incident, and I won't go into detail, but, uh, really brought me to calling, uh, police chief to, uh, help us out with an issue, um, that should have taken quite a while. And the neat thing is, is the certain thing that we needed done, uh, he had done later that evening. Put a lot of staff on board for it, and so, you know, I just really wanted to, uh, recognize Chief McWilliams, just, he's been such a great partner. A lot of times it's just, you know, at a, at the Brookshire Grocery Arena, or it's, you know, at a gym or somewhere else where their staff is just sitting there helping out, you know, many times it's just long hours of standing, but every now and then you have situations that come up that, you know, just made me realize, you know, they're in action and working all the time, but he just really, uh, highlighted. So on behalf of the Lieutenant Governor, Louisiana Office of Tourism, the Shreveport Bojor Sports Commission, which again includes Councilman Free and Clay Bohannon, who are both the pointies from the City of Bojor, the Shreveport Bojor Commission Tourist Bureau, Stacey here, and Red River Waterway Commission, we wanted to recognize Chief Shay McWilliams and the Bojor Pl, City Police Department for keeping our community strong and safe. Thank you for partnering with us to support sporting events and tourism in our area, and so thank you very much.
Counsel, I'd just like for it to be noted that I accept this on behalf of the Criminal Investigation Division, uh, mainly the Property Crimes Unit. Uh, th, this issue was involving a stolen boat, and they were able to recover that boat within probably less than eight, nine hours of the, when it was stolen. So, uh, kudos to those guys. They, uh, put everything aside and, uh, were able to recover it and get, get the property back for the owners. So I'd like to accept this on their behalf. Thank you.
The neat thing, it really took a bad, um, situation, and again, by taking care of it so quickly, it turned a really, you know, a potentially bad situation to a really great situation where, you know, we already are talking to the client about coming back, and so, again, it wasn't just the, the police chief, but Bass Pro Shop stepped in and really helped out, so it really showed off our Bojor City community. So thank you all.
Thank you all. Unfinished business?
Adopting ordinance appropriating $15,000 from the 2021 Hotel Motel Taxes Fund and payable to the Shreveport Bojor Sports Commission to help sponsor the Port City Fest Weekend. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing the reclassification of the Accounting Division and the hiring of Accounting One, resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Counsel, Stacey, would you mind, I just got, just a couple of questions.
Who did the second on that?
Well, I thought.
Tim. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You know, of course, you know, I requested everything from the finance department, purchasing salary stuff. Excuse me. As you know, I requested things from the, from your department, you know, and I received them, and I appreciate it. But, you know, if you, if you total up these things, these, the raise that we're going to give, really not, really not, I'm not concerned about the raise, I'm more concerned about the, the new hire, uh, uh, and that salary.
Yes, sir.
Because it puts your budget over.
N, no, sir.
Your.
We, we would reduce our operating expense. Historically, the last three years, we've come well under budget under our other operating expenses. So we're going to reduce the budget for the other operating expenses to create the position, and it'll be net neutral. There aren't, it will not go over budget.
Well, I just, just let me read this, this little line, this ordinance number 21 of 2018. It says the, uh, the city council verifying that, well, the requirements show that a resolution shall be passed by the Bojor City Council verifying that funding available in the total budgeted salaries is not exceeded. So evidently, and, and Stacey, I'm not jumping on you, I, I think you do a fantastic job, but we had to move around money to get to the salary line, right?
But, yes, sir.
So that your total, your total budgeted salary from, for the budget has been exceeded.
Just for the salary line, but it's going to be reduced in the other operating expenses.
But I mean, this year's budget, though, has been exceeded, though, right?
Pardon me?
Your budget line, your budget, uh, your line item for your budget has been exceeded, and that's what the ordinance says. If, if you add up your salaries with, with the new hire, it's, it's going to put you over.
Correct, but I'm going to reduce the, a line in the operating expenses to offset that, and it will be net neutral, and we have done this in other departments, not finance.
I, I'm not, I'm not picking on finance, I'm just reading what this ordinance says, though. I mean, am I reading it wrong? I mean, y'all, y'all tell me. It says, there shall be implemented a requirement that a resolution shall be passed by the city council verifying that funding available in the total budgeted salaries is not exceeded. So you budgeted last year.
But this ordinance, I'm asking you to change that and let me increase the salary line and reduce the operating expenses.
I guess that's, I mean, I, I'm sure, like I said, I'm sure you, you accounted for retirement if I couldn't.
We've had 11 bond issues since 2014, it creates a, a tremendous amount of work. We're currently working on two other bond issues. We now have gone completely paperless. We scan every single piece of paper that comes in the finance department. There are new, uh, audit, agreed upon procedures that create additional work for my staff. The gas stations alone add 12 different additional emails every single day, um, for the gas stations. The Man Shack, we help them keep track of all their projects. It's a tremendous amount of work.
I understand that.
In 2010, we had three people doing accounts payable. We've had one doing accounts payable ever since, and everybody is always drowning, and I'm asking for a lower salary to have somebody that can help pick up the slack in all of our positions of finance.
So do we need to repeal this ordinance, you think, or what?
I'd say amend the ordinance. I think we're nitpicking now. We know what the ultimate goal is, and the original ultimate goal was to ensure that we did not increase salaries over and above the operating expenses, which were originally budgeted. It, it's a matter of semantics here, and I, I think it is absolutely a good point that you bring up, Mr. Williams, that the, uh, ordinance states as such, but to sit here and not listen to the needs of your Director of Finance as to the undue or the additional burdens placed because of generally accepted accounting principles and so forth. Um, I think we need to find a way, Mr. Hall, that we could amend this to allow, uh, any department head that feels as though it's necessary to hire someone and attain that funding so that we don't have a deficit in the information that we provide, because without financial information being provided on a timely and accountable basis, we don't know what's going on. So I would ask Mr. Hall what would be the most expedient way to allow Ms. Fernandez to hire the required personnel, to amend the salary that would, uh, go over the ordinance Mr. Williams referred to, but allow for the reduction in another operating expense, thereby being net operating expense neutral. So.
I think, I think you can approve this. We've approved many other departments in the same situation. This is just the first time it's been appointed or pointed out, so we'll amend the 2018 ordinance to say that, that it can be within the operating budget. But this isn't the first time, I promise you.
So, I know it's not, but, you know.
How, how do we make that amendment? Is that something that we have to do by ordinance?
Yeah, we'll have to do an amended ordinance to change the language in that, in the ordinance that.
To allow for a, a, a net decrease in any other expenditure to offset the increase, um, to the, uh, over budgeted salary that's fixing to be, take place. So, um, with your concurrence and the rest of the council's concurrence, I would allow, or if it's legal, to allow Ms. Fernandez to proceed with the hiring so that she can get the necessary help she needs, and we'll proceed with the amendment to the ordinance.
Can we amend it right now?
I don't think so.
That, that item is, uh, it would have to be retyped, it's ordinance 18, I think it's, it would have to, that ordinance would have to be retyped, and it would have to be, that ordinance would have to be brought back up, and the agenda would have to be amended to, amended on the floor.
But as long as what I said, Mr. Hall's correct, I would like, with the council's concurrence, that we proceed and allow her to proceed with the hiring of the necessary personnel.
Think like, the, is, is the argument then, I mean, it seems like it's very, makes sense to have the person hired, is it then just, just our procedural, um, issue here that?
Well, I thought that the ordinance did read that it would be increasing the salary.
Your, uh, net.
Position.
Up to your net, um, your operating budget, but what Mr. Williams is referring to is there's, there's an ordinance out there that says that your salary line can't be over, that any changes.
It's one of those unintended.
Right.
Consequences of what the ultimate goal was, to ensure that we don't overspend over what was budgeted. So it's a, a technicality in, in my view that's, you know, been brought forth, again, that's an unintended consequence, which we will rectify. And allow everyone to go forward with hiring the necessary qualified personnel that they need to operate.
Again, I'm not picking on you, Stacey, I just, I just go back to 2009, where we got over budget, we got too many people, and that's what caused, and I'm not saying this is going to happen now. I look back on that, I was present that year, and I had people up there crying. David, and, and David understands that, too, and I understand his point today, but, so we, we pass something that, that really is no good, I guess.
Mr. Hall? Would there need to be a, a amendment from the floor for this particular ordinance, because her ordinance reads now there, therefore be it further adained by the City Council of Bojor City, Louisiana, in regular session convened, that the Accounting Division is hereby authorized to reclassify positions and to utilize the remaining unused budgeted salary to increase the salaries of other positions and hire an accountant one, resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget.
I don't think it does. I think they can approve that, and by action it changes the ordinance, but I will further, uh, amend the ordinance that's been referred to so that it's clarified.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
So we can proceed with voting, correct?
I have a motion by Mr. Irwin and a second by Mr. Larkin.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
I'm already on one, but.
Disappeared. Oh, there we go.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the airline water tank rehabilitation and painting project for a total of $1,885,000 to come from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund. Final reading.
So move.
Move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any other further comments? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance amending ordinance 133 of 2019, increasing the appropriated amount by $105,300 from the Water Capital Contingency Fund and to extend the Nano Filtration Pilot Study Program by six months. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance amending the fines, fees, and costs for several criminal charges in Chapter 38 of the Bojor City Code of Ordinances. Final reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to temporarily reduce the management fees paid to ASM Global to manage the Brookshire Grocery Arena from April 2021 through June 2021, and to enter into a five-year contract between the City of Bojor City and ASM Global. Final reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business. Adopting ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the City of Bojor City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to prevent and repair or replace infrastructure due to event number 4590, the Louisiana severe winter storm, at a cost not to exceed $1,293,922.23, to come from the Disaster Reserve Fund. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carried on that one. Adopted zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC, petitioner Luther Hagler, 1106 Violet Avenue, Bojor City, Louisiana, City Council District 1, request zoning amendment to change the zoning classification of attractive land from B1 Business Commercial Office to RD, RLD, Residential Low Density.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience?
I got one for Carlotta.
Carlotta?
I've been meaning to ask you this question months ago when I had Mr. Hagler's letter, so he's, I, I wrote about it, he's got a double driveway with a gate that goes back behind his house. How much length, because he, the letter said, I think, he's going to store, he's got a bunch of stuff, motorcycles, cars, campers, he's going to store back there, a, and I guess I look at it as. And I guess I look at it as, we're trying to clean up the place, the city, but, so how does he do that?
He informed the board that he was actually gonna live there and store his toys there. I think the letter was a little bit misleading, but that's what he told the MPC.
He's gonna.
He's gonna live there and actually store his toys, boats, motorcycles, and things like that at the, at the residence.
He's gonna live in the house there in the front, or live?
In, in the back.
Oh, in the back?
Mm-hmm.
See, you know, you drive around, and you can't see a house or nothing, I mean, but.
Correct. The, the board found that this would be the best and highest use for that, because it's Zone B1, so it could have been anything, a medical office or anything like that, so they found that the downzoning would be better for the subdivision surrounding.
Okay, and like I said, I guess, is that, Mr. Hagler, would you mind not, not me asking a question? Is that the only way you get in, through your gates right there?
If you could state your name and address, please, for the record. Name and address.
Name's Luther Hagler. I live at 408 White Street.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hagler. Go ahead.
Is that the only access to your properties through that gate, or is there another one around somewhere else?
That, that's the only access in.
Okay. Okay, I, like, I was just, that was a question for Carlotta. I've been meaning to ask her for months, and I just.
That was the old, original Bossier City Water Department down there.
Oh, really?
And then they sold it to another water company, and I just don't feel like the, the people in that residential area need a business going in and out of there on, making the traffic so much heavier because of the school that has access to that Violet Street.
Okay.
And I agree. Having this zone residential for the storage of your, your private items is much better than having, you know, an oil service company coming in with trucks and pipes and trailers.
It's just an old man cave.
Yeah, I mean, this is a, you don't see this too often, but, but this is an improvement. This is not a degradation of that area. To say otherwise is, is just not, to know the area is happening.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hagler. Thank you, Carlotta. All right. Any other discussion? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC, petitioner Shangri-La Spa, location 1603 Airline Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. It's the Coleman Park subdivision, unit number six, lot one, and city council District Three, request zoning amendment to change zoning classification from B1 Business Office to B2 Limited Business for proposed massage therapy business.
You the motion? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC, petitioner Keith Lebran, Brookshire Grocery Company, location 7.805 acre tract of land, more or less located at the southeast corner of Airline Drive and Wimple Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. It's immediately south of CVS, city council District Five, request zoning classification change from RA Residential Agriculture to B3 General Business for a proposed grocery store.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the city of Bossier City by annexing approximately 258.299 acres located in the south half of Section 10 and in the southwest quarter of Section 11, township 18 North, range 13 West, Bossier Parish, Louisiana. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the Bardot Lane and Montgomery Lane drainage rehabilitation project, phases one and two, for a total of $550,000, to come from Fund 400 Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, I got a call, Mr. Robinson walked that, took a lot of pictures, gave it to Ben, and Ben had already walked it, and I think the mayor, we was gonna get, do half of it, you know, so it's, it's in critical shape, it really is. I think the mayor, did you go out and look at it, Mayor?
Yes.
Before, yeah.
We needed to do something about that area for years, and it's time to do.
Yes, it, it really is as bad.
Any other questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to reappoint, reappropriate, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Introduce an ordinance to fund the stormwater pump station for the Walter O'Bigby Carriageway, Phase Two, at a cost of $3,900,000, to come from Fund 415, the Walter O'Bigby Carriageway Fund. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to reappropriate $20,000 from Fund 497, the 2017 sales tax bond for Innovation Drive for the preparation of a traffic study at Louisiana 3105 Airline Drive at Green Acres Boulevard. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce a supplemental bond ordinance authorizing the issuance and delivery of $130 million of taxable utilities revenue refunding bond, series 2021, of the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, in accordance with the terms of the general bond ordinance adopted on July. I think there's a title on my part.
That's why I thought I didn't tell you about.
No one told me. July 6, 2010. Prescribing the form and certain terms and conditions of said bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance levy and ad valorem taxes on taxable property within the limits of the city of Bossier City, Louisiana, for the year 2021, and providing the manner of assessment and collection thereof. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance appropriating an additional $1 million to add to the 2.1 million appropriated for a fire station in the East Bank District by ordinance 40 of 2020. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience?
Say, so where's that money, that million dollars coming from? Did you say?
It's coming from two different places. We still had some of the downtown bond issue money, 400,000, and the 600,000 is coming, I believe, from Riverboat Gaming. It should be on the backup of the ordinance. I'm not positive about the Riverboat. I know the 400s from the downtown bond.
Okay, thank you.
400,000 from Fund 240, 600,000 from Fund 235 Hotel Motel.
The 240 is the Fire Improvement and Operations Fund, and then the 600,000 is from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund.
Is there, is there a reason for the increase, Chief? Do you have the need, another million?
Probably a better question for Mr. McLean, but the cost of construction, since the last time we did one, has gone up, and obviously you've seen the cost of lumber go through the roof here lately, so when we went out to bid last time, we weren't even close with our budgeted number. We thought, kind of looking at the same one, like number three, with a little bit of difference being number six, a little busier station, but our numbers were off, so.
Where's number three?
Three is the one on plantation.
Okay.
One kind of, kind of laid out close to that style, not two-story, not all that, like the other ones you've seen, so.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am? If you could state your name and address.
Tamer Crane, 2002 Ray Avenue. So my question was just, the new one is being built in East District, what's happening with the one on Arthur Teague by Boomtown?
Chief?
Can you please talk into the microphone?
I'm a little microphone shy.
I know.
The one, the old number six is gonna become EMS. When COVID and the pandemic hit, there is all kind of stuff we have that we have no room to store, it needs to be climate controlled. We now have three physicians on staff. We have one that can treat our firemen, we have rapid test machines, we have all kinds of things with nowhere to put it, and this is why we need to expand. When this station was built in the 80s, there was only two offices for EMS. There's no, EMS is way bigger than that now, so that provided a fire station in the East Bank District and us to be able to turn that into EMS and EMS storage.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution approving the hiring of one fire communications employee and the promotion of one fire communications employee and one fire communications employee to replace one position due to retirement. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring and promotion of a recreation maintenance worker two and backfilling any position this may create for Parks and Recreation. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of four firefighter positions due to four retirement and resignations. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience?
So just, could I, that last vote, I think mine came out against those.
You voted against it?
And he seconded it.
I'm really for it. I don't.
So you're asking me to change your vote on that one, Mr. Larkin? I will make sure the record states that you're in favor of that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So I have a motion by Mr. Williams and a second by Mr. Darby for the four firefighter positions.
Need further discussion? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a part-time gym monitor for Parks and Recreation. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a recreation maintenance worker one for Parks and Recreation. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of one police records clerk from clerk two to clerk three, status for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of two police officers for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Any other business? Mayor?
Nothing, thank you.
I would like to, I may, I'd just like to encourage people to participate on April 17th with Operation Clean Sweep. It's an initiative to pick up trash in Bossier City. People can register through, I saw a link through the Bossier Now website, and they're encouraging groups to get together all across the city to pick up trash. I believe that if you register, you get a T-shirt, and you, they're gonna serve hamburgers, and it's gonna be a nice community event, so if you not, don't remember any of these details, just Google Operation Clean Sweep, Bossier City, and you'll get information.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Everyone have a great week, meeting adjourned.